We began the meeting at seven o'clock exactly on the cell phone. Dana, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Jared Vincent.
Here.
And Cupids.
Here.
Rick Egglestein.
Here.
Randy Cant.
Here.
Connie Schattman.
Here.
Mandy Burnett.
Here.
Mike Trumlin.
He is excused. To everyone in the audience, welcome. This is a public business meeting for the Planning Commission. But along the way, we'll welcome responses and ideas from anyone that's here and wants to speak. Everyone, we ask that you sign in on the sign in sheet on the one along the wall there. This gives us a record of who has attended the meeting. The commission is made up of seven Bruce Township citizens appointed by the Board of Bruce Township. In addition to that, we have a township employee, Dana. Dana McCannon and Joe Tengary to my right is a professional planner with Kiffels in Webster. And he helps us along the way and in between meetings as well. Okay, for people that are here to talk about a specific item, you'll have the opportunity to come to the podium. And we ask that you state your name and your address. And generally, if you're not the petitioner, try to keep your comments to about three minutes or so. Keeps the meeting moving along. However, we'll give you opportunity to make sure you get to participate. Okay, when you come to the podium after giving your name and address and as the dialogue unfolds, you are to talk to the Planning Commission, not to a petitioner directly. That keeps things moving along the way it should be. We'll give you the opportunity to speak and answer questions. And on behalf of all the commissioners, we welcome your participation in our meeting. For some of the issues, we're a recommending body to the Board. They make the final decision. And for others, we are the final decision group. We'll make you aware of that as we go. And I guess one thing that I did not do officially is to call the meeting to order. That's now official. We did the roll call. And what I'm asking everyone to do now is to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible,endeeming, justice for all.
Okay, item four on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. We need that in the form of a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 1st, 2023.
And I'll second it.
I'll second it.
So, motion by Connie Schattman and seconded by Mandy Burnett. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda, everyone has a copy of at the commission level. There any changes anyone sees that we should consider or we okay as is? If there is nothing, I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the agenda as we received. Need a second.
A second.
Motion by Cupid, seconded by Jared. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving along fairly quickly, but we now are item number six, which is public comment. If you're here to talk about a specific item on the agenda for consideration by the Planning Commission, there'll be a time for each one of those as we go through the agenda. This one is really in case you have some questions of general planning issues for the Planning Commission or you want to express an opinion, whatever it is. Feel free to go to the podium, give us your name, address, and then you'll have an opportunity to speak. So, is there anyone here that wants to take advantage of that?
Could we both come up?
That's fine, sure.
Hi, my name's Alexis Strunk. I live at 8650 Pilgrim, Washington, Michigan. I'm just here today to... Do you want his name as well? Okay.
My name is Greg Zwing. I had 8650 Pilgrim Road, Washington, Michigan.
Thank you.
Just here today because I'm looking into opening a boarding and daycare business in Bruce Township. The location that I'm looking at is in the Fiddler's Cove Shopping Center, Suite 71340. It is a zoning C2. I'm looking to do anywhere from 10 to 15 dogs daily, daycare and boarding. I would like to do indoor and outdoor. If outdoor is not okay, that is fine. Just looking on some feedback as if it would be okay for the zone, if it would be okay for the township, things like that.
Okay, well, that will require you, I think, to fill out an application with Dana.
Well, they did approach me.
I talked to her yesterday.
They did approach me and I threw the idea out to Joe. I think the, it's a little... Doesn't really fit real into any particular nice category the way that we have it, especially in the C2. We talked maybe the standalone or C1 maybe...
What was the address again?
71340 Van Dyke.
It's part of Fiddler's Cove.
Yeah.
So, I think that maybe as a commission, we should talk a little bit about, is that something that, you know, it's a relatively new thing, people, you know, having doggy daycare. I don't know, it's a new thing, but I don't think that, you know, I don't know when it actually, actually. What do we think is, you know, something that...
Is there anything like that necessarily listed in the business for C1, C2 or anywhere?
Not really. We don't really have a pet daycare or a similar...
Business?
Business listed in any of our districts.
Well, how does the, what does the dog ranch fall into?
Yeah, is there one near kennels? This is totally separate.
Yeah, there is, there is a kennel.
They have their own special land use.
Okay.
I guess what would be the difference? This is like, so not overnight or what do you?
It would be overnight as well, yes.
So, it is a kennel, I think, really.
That would probably be our most similar use then, if it was more.
Yeah, it would be dog boarding specifically, but I would also offer daycare for people that just need day to day.
Yeah, so Fiddler's Cove kind of thing. And I've seen, you know, places that, and then I've seen the, like, the dog ranch where it's completely, you know, not part of the shopping mall.
How many animals are you looking to have maximum at any point in time?
15 maximum.
Trying to pull it up.
How would the outdoor space work in the shopping center? You don't have a grassy area.
Yeah, so for that, it would be, and it would only be if it was approved. You would take part of the parking lot, that would be approved, which I know that one is not very good. So, we're kind of just looking anywhere in Bruce Township, but that one was one that appealed to us directly. You would take part of the parking lot and turn it into a rock sediment and then put turf over the top of it. There's chemicals that are used to dissipate the smell and such, things like that, just so it won't interrupt the surrounding businesses. So, that would be how I would do the outdoor. It would be like a turf with a stone underneath that, so it goes straight through to the ground.
And fenced in as well.
Yes, and soundproofed on indoor, all the, all the way through, soundproofed. Soundproof the outside as much as possible, but it's open area.
So, what would be the normal process for them to... We haven't heard this before until just now. And to give them our thoughts and decision or recommendations.
We had a dog ranch come in here a while ago when they put on an addition. And we also had Roth on 32 Mile Road, they built a kennel. There's very specific ordinances for a kennel. It's a minimum lot area of five acres. For one thing, if you read the ordinance.
Yeah, if you're looking for it, it's section four.
4.35.
35. And RS and R1 are the districts that permit kennels as a special land use.
RS and R1.
Yeah. So, you know, clearly, the ordinance now is considering a kennel to be more rural use, I think.
Okay.
Whereas I think, you know, a modern dog daycare is, you know, less of a rural use, I guess.
It's interesting that it's an R rating, like it's a residential rating per kennel.
Yeah, it's our two large lot residential districts.
Is it because it says there's a minimum of five acres?
Maybe.
So, I guess.
Okay, I was wondering about the five acres. I saw that.
I know, like, in Shelby, there are parks about where I'm saving my dog, the obedience training. It's like the industrial district.
Yeah, so we have a very general definition of kennel in our ordinance. Means any lot of premises on which four or more dogs, six months old or older, are kept either permanently or temporarily. So, that would definitely describe this because there's more than four dogs and they're kept temporarily or permanently. So, at present, that's the best terminology we have in the ordinance for what's being described here.
Can I just pull it up on the map? So, there's businesses on both sides of that?
Yes, the specific one is an end cap. So, it is on the far left, which was preferable out of all of them for us, but...
Well, and the ordinance also says at least 100 square feet for each animal.
Yes.
Including area devoted to interior kennel space and runs.
Yes.
And then the other ones came in with their blueprints. You had to have the space, you had to have drains, you had to have...
Sure, yeah, you need to be able to basically hose out and get it runs.
And we did talk to the broker and he said that the lease would be open to us putting drains into the floor.
Okay, I think the problem is, you know, the, the five acres and all the space. I don't know.
Well, I think really what it is, what the, what the Planning Commission would be considering, and obviously, you're not going to consider or make a decision on it tonight, but...
Sure.
What the Planning Commission would be considering is whether or not there's a distinction between the kennels that we already address in our ordinance and what they're proposing. If there is, if there would be a reason to create a separate use that would be permitted elsewhere and in a different way.
And even if you did just have a doggy daycare and not an overnight thing, wouldn't you still want areas for them to run?
Well, yeah, you would definitely have to have, I mean, I think they would probably be bound by certain standards themselves. But yeah, you would want certain standards, absolutely. We would need to develop something. It's not something you can do, you know, in a meeting or something like that. You'd have to actually really think about the standards.
I'd submit also, Joe, that not just looking at the differences, but what are the commonalities?
Sure, and there are commonalities.
You know, I mean, the biggest commonality is barking dogs.
Yes.
And that, that can be a big problem for some people.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we understand that completely. And that's why we're kind of looking just for this general area because this is a very big growth area right now. And the dog daycare boarding industry is in a huge upswing. So, we just kind of wanted to reach out in general also, just to see how you guys would feel about if we even just did more rural, but still in Bruce Township, not so near other businesses and stuff. We just really like this area. We really like the growth and we're hoping to add to the community.
So, when you pull into Fiddler's Cove, it would be towards the left end behind the...
Yeah.
Yes.
Close to the trailer park there.
It is, yes, yeah.
So, you know, can't say for sure, but I just think you're at risk of creating a nuisance.
Sure, yeah.
In the area.
Yeah.
And, you know, we all agree that there's a lot of vacant space in Fiddler's Cove and certainly be in the best interest of township to have another space occupied over there, but...
Maybe not the best spot for that business.
You know, this is an application, we're just kind of like, you know, thinking out loud here.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we need to, our mission is to look out for not only you, but also everyone.
Yeah, for sure.
We also talked a little bit about the, there's a few other, like, but it's C1. There's a couple, I think there's one in 86 and Van Dyke. I don't know if they're too far out for what, you know, if you're trying to...
Right, that little building, it was once a pet store, I think, too, as well.
Yeah, just that that's kind of more rural, but it's, like I said, it's still C1.
It is, yeah, it's C1.
But a standalone versus, you know...
Yeah, by itself, so, I don't know, just, and grass.
Yep.
So, where do they go from here?
Well, it, I guess it's, if it's something that we want to consider allowing this, whether it's a, you know, it's a, something a little, little different than what we now call kennel. Or do we just say now for instinct, but we have the definition as it is and...
Well, I guess my question is, is, do we have something that we can give to them? They come to the township hall and be able to provide a copy of...
New ordinance?
I'd say give them a copy of the 4.35, the kennel thing to start with. And I don't think a shopping center is where you want to go.
Okay.
But find something else with a little more land and grass.
Yeah, as a dog owner who takes our dog to Shelby Township, I'd love another place local.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree that may not be the best location. I guess the other question for Joe is, is this something at least considered, or looking at how other communities are zoning these? I'm a little surprised by the RS, R1. That it's not more of a C designation, but I'm just curious if...
Yeah, when I looked at it too, I'm surprised specifically with R1. I mean, two acres is not a big piece of property.
Especially if the ordinance says five is the minimum.
Yeah, you'd have to have a property in the district that exceeds the minimum.
Okay.
And with the five acres, there's also like, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there is a certain distance between property lines that it has to be maintained as well.
Yeah, there's setbacks.
I think there's 100 feet.
We have a contradiction, Joe, between, as Jared just mentioned, five acre minimum, but it also stating that R1's allowed. I mean, that's...
Well, it would just have to be on a five acre lot in, in R1. You couldn't, you couldn't do it on a smaller lot.
But I mean, the deal is, is, you know, R1 is down to two acres. So, I mean, it probably shouldn't even be in there, correct?
I mean, I guess you could, you could think about the district and whether or not you feel it's appropriate in the district, but there are five acre lots in that district, so...
A five acre lot, okay, I see what you're saying. We could have a five acre lot in an R1 district.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, thank you.
We can make a look at one of those and potentially do something there.
Okay.
And you're right, it does say, shall be located at least 100 feet from any property line.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a setback standard specific to these in there.
So, did you get enough for what you were looking for tonight?
We think so, we're kind of breaking the ice, trying to figure things out, so...
Well, my question still is, are we going to just leave, leave it as is and it's only going to be kennel consideration? Or is Joe going to look for, like Jared said, other examples where there's maybe somewhere, somewhere that it would fit?
So, I, my question to Joe is, are we classifying it a kennel correctly as in RS, R1? Or should that really be a commercial designation? I'm just curious what other municipalities are doing. I guess, looking at it as it's kind of presented tonight, it's kind of a, seems like a tough road to, to go down.
Yeah.
Yeah, at that side.
Yeah.
In the community, great fit. It seems like that'd be a good addition, just my opinion, but...
Find a bigger space for it.
I think that's what they were pretty flexible, so...
So, we're only permitted in R1 or RS, five acre minimum?
Correct.
No commercial, industrial?
Correct.
Yeah, so...
I do know that there are some communities that allow it in industrial districts. Troy is one. There's, I can think of one offhand down the street from where my son takes music lessons.
But for, currently for R1 or RS, both of them are special land use?
Yes.
Okay. Part of the reason we're spending so much time with you is that there's an application fee. So, you know, I think you know kind of the flavor of, of the planning commission right now. So, we don't want you to take and make an investment and...
Okay.
And have it go, you know, in a negative direction, I mean, but also giving you an opportunity to kind of rethink your, your proposal before you commit to spending money.
Yeah, appreciate that, yeah.
Sure, appreciate your understanding.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you guys so much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep walking.
Thank you, we will.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else under the public comment section to come to the podium? Okay, if not, we'll move on to number seven. Public hearing for fitness establishment size. Joe, I think you had a little conversation on that one.
Yes, so we were approached by a gentleman interested in relocating a gymnastics business to Bruce Township, specifically to the C2 district. Kind of an odd C2 parcel because it's zone C2 on the basis of consent judgment, but nevertheless, it's a C2 parcel. And our C2 district permits as a permitted use, physical health establishments, there's less than 5,000 square feet in area. And if a physical health establishment is over 5,000 square feet in area, it does not have a mechanism for being permitted in that district. So, just looking around at other ordinances and even some instances in our own ordinance where we've got some sort of size threshold. Typically, what you'll see is the, the smaller size is the permitted use and the larger size is often a special land use. And so, the draft or the amended ordinance that's in front of you that we have this hearing on slightly tweaks the existing language to physical health establishment no greater than 5,000 feet. So, if it's exactly 5,000 feet, it's in the principal permitted use. Right now, it has to be 4,999 square feet to be permitted use in the district. So, we're just basically putting the threshold at 5,000. And then if it's over 5,000 square feet, it would be a special land use in the same district. So, we would be able to look at the characteristics of the business and determine whether or not it was appropriate for that location. For instance, if it had a major outdoor element to it, we might not want to put it right next to a subdivision or something. But if it's entirely indoors, we may be comfortable with that. And just gives us a chance to look at that in some detail.
Okay, well, we, we have this on our agenda as a public hearing, given that the person that originally raised the issue, I didn't see him or doesn't have a representative here, so I went directly to Joe. But I think what we'll do is we'll open it up to see if there's anyone here who wants to address it through the public hearing. I have it, and if not, we'll come back and, and discuss. So, is there anyone here that is here to talk about the fitness establishment size that Joe just described? Neighborhood person or you're here for something else is what I'm going to ask.
Do you need to officially open the public hearing?
Yeah, you need a motion to...
Need to do that.
I will make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:25.
Second.
Motion by Connie to open the public hearing, seconded by Rick. Dana, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Jared Vincent?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Egglestein?
Yes.
Randy Cant?
Yes.
Schattman?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
So, we'll move on and if there's anyone that, from the audience that wants to talk, feel free. Seeing none, I may need a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, make a motion to close the public hearing at, it still says 7:20, 7:26.
Second.
Motion by Connie, seconded by Rick. Dana, can you call the roll, please?
Benson?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Egglestein?
Yes.
Cant?
Yes.
Schattman?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Or a motion.
Or a motion, yes.
Hearing no comments, well, I mean, is, I'll let you make that statement.
For a motion?
Well, I mean, is it appropriate? I mean, we're, we're not hearing any commissioner comments and if, if not, I'm ready to make a motion.
So, now that it is now, we're saying if it's over 5,000, we, 5,000 square feet there is now an avenue to pursue a special land use?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And it accommodates the one gentleman that petitioned, not petitioned, showed up and asked questions?
Yes, it would, it would cover what he's proposing.
Okay, so there's a motion that's been made and seconded on the floor.
Okay, we know I haven't made the motion. I just, I'm ready to make one, but I have a question. This is, this is a recommendation to the board.
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to submit a motion. As a recommendation to the board for changes to ordinance 161, section 02-23. Or, I'm sorry, it's, let me restate that. It's section 161, 3 dot 1 dot 13 dot B. Clarifying language for permitted use under article one for healthcare establishments, establishments no greater than 5,000 square feet. And similarly, same preface language for article number two within 161 dash 3 dot 1 dot 13 dot C to add item eight as follows. Physical health establishment over 5,000 square feet is a special land use.
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, seconded by Jared. Now, Dana, will you call the roll?
Burnett?
Yes.
Schattman?
Yes.
Cant?
Yes.
Egglestein?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Yes.
On your reviews, do we have anything?
No, just the, the only one we have is old business, so I think it'll be further down the agenda.
Item number nine, the only communication item that I have is for the planning commissioners. The board has approved a $25 per meeting improvement and compensation we all received. That happened at the last board meetings, I understand.
I, I have a comment, I think it's appropriate for comment versus communication. During the February board meeting, they approved the Romeo Space Bank but all. Since the applicant had met all the requirements, or conditions rather, is communicated by Mike Trumbullay as our planning commission liaison, and also they fulfilled the fire department requirements, they were verified, all the safety items have been resolved, and also the board deemed that parking issues were not relevant. That's it.
Actually, in relation to that, I'll take these and pass them down. There are probably quite a few issues with the Romeo space, I'm still with the.
They do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that, no.
Is this this R1 or vacation rentals?
Rent by owner, yeah.
There's from, there's a few that are on Yelp, their hours are off. Receptionhouse.com, it says there's guest accommodations, there's a rent by owner website where they're advertising as an apartment, their hours are not listed on their website, which I think they should be.
I made copies of what she's got printed here on the rental space, one bedroom apartment, and she calls it in Allentown, Michigan?
Yeah.
Is that so we wouldn't figure out it's the Romeo space?
I.
I feel like we've been slapped in the face. She signed the paper to say, no overnight stays, and all this, and now we find this, and she was told to remove everything?
So, with that website, you can't actually go to book it, so I don't know if.
She was told to remove everything, so.
Right, so this part needs to be taken down, but nobody can actually rent it from this listing, it's still showing it has available.
But she signed a paper saying she would remove everything, yeah.
So, from an enforcement standpoint.
Right, we'll have to have the enforcement.
Yes.
And hopefully, we don't have to do this every month.
Right.
As I recall, in the meeting, I think we all are familiar with the lady, she had indicated that a, her daughter or another family member had actually done the setting up of the website, so this may.
I find it is harder to believe. You don't do something like this and she doesn't know about it.
I would like to say, I hope it is not.
Well.
But.
I know it's difficult getting some stuff off the web, and Yelp is a pretty large.
Well, and she did provide me with letters that she has written threatening legal action if it's not taken down because they were slow to take some down. I can provide that for you too, but.
She may want to inquire with professional IT people, I mean, I think there's paid services available to be able to kill websites, so that'd be another, because it's obviously a sensitive issue here.
Okay, so, is that something that I need to talk to Mike about, or can you do that?
I can do that if I need to look back in.
Another item in the area of communications, there was a meeting that was held with the, like, myself and Mike Philbrook regarding the condominium for 156 Gates, that development. And so, keeping it to as briefly as I can, there was a meeting where they had discussed again that same development area with some different alternatives. And then Mike and I met with Anne Reed, who's here, and Donna Stone, just to kind of filter, memorialize them with conversation that has occurred. So, just not getting into the detail, but just making you aware that there was additional dialogue. And we can discuss it outside of our meeting, if you call or whatever, if you want to know the detail. But it's an evolving thing, not solved by the action that we took in the board so far. And they may be considering a different approach. Okay, anything else to pass along? So, we're on item number 10, unfinished business. Andrew Harlow rezoning request at Kading and Van Dyke. Approach the microphone, give us your name and address for the record.
Andrew Harlow, 11901 Kading Road, Bruce Township.
Okay, what would you like to say?
Okay, so I brought forth a new set of plans, a new idea, obviously, that it kind of opens it up to individual units more than an apartment building with everyone individually well, individual garbage, its own road still, like entry, so you're not bombarding Van Dyke. There, tried to, like, work with what you guys said and make it like a little more usable space, I guess, not so compact, so instead of eight units, we've reduced it down to six units. And trying to make it more like a, not so like an apartment building, because it's three individual townhouses now, with garages, so their cars will all be tucked away and hidden, also more of like a home setting. I don't know, any questions, I guess?
What's the square footage per unit?
Roughly 1,600.
These would not be rentals, would these?
These, yeah, these would be sold, individual, individually sold units. They're more like townhouses, you know, is the way I would section them as, townhouses, because everyone's got their own front porch, their own door, their own entryway, the garage just kind of separates everything from everyone.
I think we'll move to Joe, if you have any background material, Joe, for us?
Yeah, so, I guess, I, I didn't see any change to the request, you know, district wise. One thing that I'll note is that, you know, we have three RM districts, we have RM1, RM2, and RM3. The densities that are permitted in those three districts are in order, RM1, RM2, RM3, 7.26, 8.7, and 10.89 units per acre. And what he's showing here would be 6.98 units per acre, which is consistent with RM1. So, I just wanted to note that RM1 is really the density that he's looking for with his concept plan. The request, as I recall.
Didn't you say 6. what?
6.98, yeah. Because it's slightly, it's like a 8.89 acres. So, the request was originally for RM3, I just want to point out that when a rezoning is granted, if a rezoning is granted, the request, you know, doesn't necessarily have to match the rezoning that's granted ultimately, so if RM1 is truly the district that actually is closest to what's being requested, you could opt to say, we're going to go with RM1, not RM3, if he, if he agrees, he has to figure it out, but. So, that's something to keep in mind. Otherwise, I can go through anything in my letter that you'd like, but, you know, even though we, we went through it last time, I didn't want to burden you with all of it again if you didn't want to hear it.
I'd like to say, well, first of all, this isn't the Romeo Plan Commission, it's Bruce Township.
Oh.
It's not the Village Romeo, but you talked about PUD development?
Yeah, but I was told those aren't allowed.
There's no way this can be a PUD.
Yeah.
No.
We don't have a.
Yeah, we don't, I was told, they don't, you guys don't do this kind of.
Yeah. He didn't realize that we didn't have a PUDs.
Okay.
I've got some comments. So, for the recent Sirikoff rezoning request next to Deer Park, we were using square footage per unit allocations over there, approximately, either 20 units on 5.9 acres, Anne Reed?
Yes.
Okay, so, it boils down to approximately an allocation of 12,800 square feet per unit. And coincidentally, the Menko Timbers development that, I don't think they've started with their, with their first unit, but they're behind Sheena's, that's basically 12,500, I mean, it's within a few hundred feet. So, if we were to approve this at six units on your 0.89 acres, the allocation would be only 6,400 square feet per unit. So, now, in my opinion, that, with that density, that's a precedent problem, and especially regarding the application we just denied for Tom Sirikoff, so.
But I, I am down zoning though, aren't I, opposed to Mr. Sirikoff's R1, and I'm already C1.
No, I get.
So, I thought, I was, I mean, when I originally went to the board and they, or to Dana here, she had said that, yeah, I could downzone, I can't upzone, so that, that's what I was trying to do, is just downzone to keep it even, so I don't know how R1 and C1 are even, like, being combined.
I get your, what you're saying, Andy, but, you know, the end result is, is what is it gonna look like? I mean, how dense is it? And, you know, you're going from C1, or requesting to go from a C1 commercial district, kind of like backzoning back to an equivalent, you know, residential district. And like what Joe just mentioned, it would, you know, based on the density, it'd be equivalent of an RM1. But the density at, at Menko Timbers, that's still zoned R1B, but it was a consent judgment where their effective density is R1C, which is approximately 30 acre.
Right.
So, and, you know, we just have to be very careful what we approve, because, you know, what we allow, that kind of becomes the benchmark for that area.
Right, but that's for people down zoning, you know what I mean? The benchmark, it wouldn't be for people up zoning, like, because you guys keep referring to Deer Park or over there, but that's like an upzone, and I'm down zoning, you know what I mean, so I'm trying to.
It's, it's only a letter and a number, Andy, it, you know, it really is, I mean, what's gonna be built there, how it's gonna look, and.
Well, if it's, so we, could we meet maybe and like, kind of get like a set of, like, agreements of what could be put in there?
I, I think we've got a, a recommendation.
Because, because I made this change, because, on, like, what I was kind of told, kind of, and that's why I came with this new plan and new drawings and everything, just to try to appease the board, to be honest, and work with you. I don't want to waste your guys' time.
Well, we allowed you to come back in on a table because, you know, these applications can't be open ended.
Right.
And so, we're trying to be accommodating of you, so, you know, this meeting, I think back at least a month ago or greater, we were hopeful that there would be a proposal that would be acceptable by the planning commission to allow your initiative to go forward. And I can only speak for myself, you know, you've heard my concerns.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think it's too dense as requested, so, and we got a couple of choices, I mean, we could take and vote on your existing request tonight, you could roll the dice on that, and if you're turned down, you'll lose your application fee.
Right.
I think to try and be understanding of you, I mean, you're a long standing citizen for what that's worth, but I mean, you're coming in and, and trying to do something, you're trying to improve the community.
Right.
We recognize value in that, to give you another month, and that, you know, I would volunteer myself to be part of a work group committee, I did that before, but I, I think you were undecided and, you know, at that point in time, you didn't want to, you know, pursue it further, but I'll.
I, I was, I was gonna meet, I would have met, I didn't say I wouldn't pursue it, I just, I didn't, you had, or someone had stated that, that it just wouldn't work out, is what I was told, that it wasn't worth your time to have the group or something like that.
Well, for whatever what was said, but, you know, I'm willing to make time available.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And we need some others from the planning commission to participate with you.
Would we be able to get the planner there too, that way we could kind of like make stuff move quicker?
No, I don't believe so, because there would be a cost for.
Well, don't, when I pay the fee, don't I get a meeting with the planner, though? I, I should be allotted one, I think it's on the thing there.
It's, it's just his.
Just review, oh, I don't get a meeting or any?
He's right here.
No, I, I'm just wondering if, like.
Yeah, there's a separate cost for a meeting, because it's, it's a trip to the township.
He's not here.
Okay, but so, but I could have him come, because it's like, every time we keep coming back, it's the same thing, so maybe it'd be worthwhile to have him at the meeting, so the board members could get their questions answered along the way, that way everybody's on the same page, instead of me, instead of everyone wasting their time, keep coming back and forth.
I don't think if you had a meeting with board members, whether it's Rick or whatever, they would more or less know what would be acceptable to Joe.
Joe's telling, there, there's no ambiguity on Joe's part, he's held to the literal intent within the zoning ordinances.
Right.
And, you know, any other applicable laws, we ask him for advice on that. But as far as, you know, this is a special land use, so this is where, you know, we have the opportunity to take away out the pros and cons, and where it's somewhat outside the box.
Right.
So, trying, trying to come up with a solution that works for you.
Yeah.
For the community.
I'm, I'm fully for that, so if you guys want, are willing to spend the time and help me, I would be grateful.
I think somewhere along the way, I got an email that indicated you were willing to meet and, you know, go through it, make some concessions, understand.
Yeah.
So, I, I think we're prepared to do that with you.
That'd be great.
And in anticipation of it, I've talked to Jared and asked him to be the spokesperson in the meeting with you, and then Randy on the other end of the table to meet as well.
All right, perfect.
You always can go back to Joe with questions. And the idea is to give you the opportunity to make it work.
Yep.
But at the same time, we can't.
No, I just want to find out what I can do with the property, because I mean, you know.
If you're, if you're willing to do that.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, it makes sense.
If you're prepared to do that, yeah, probably should do that in the way of a motion.
Yeah, yes.
We would just meet here, at the, meet here at the town hall, we just meet here for the meeting?
I think it would be at this location, that's what we've done in the past.
All right, I'm just wondering, sorry.
Yeah, Rick, also, you can, you know, participate as, as appropriate in your availability.
Yeah, my, my availability right now, I'm kind of an alternate, I mean, I've got some stuff going on that, you know, could come up last minute where I need to be removed from the.
I understand.
So, but, you know, I want to be a part of it if possible, I mean, I can always be reached by phone, you know, barring some really strange circumstance, so, but who else would like to be a part of the?
Jared will, will host it, and then Randy will participate as well. Those are the two of them.
Okay.
And with the petitioner, and they have Joe at their disposal as needed, but not for the meeting, but question and answer kind of.
And you're not to toot our horn, Andy, I mean, we could have just voted on this thing, and, you know, we're trying to be really accommodating.
No, I appreciate it, and I'm, I'm trying to work with you guys to just try, that's why I keep bringing new idea, I mean, I'm just, whatever idea will work, I'll just keep throwing at the wall, I guess.
You are, and, you know, you're approaching this very respectfully, and we appreciate that, and we're, we're trying to work with you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, appreciate it.
So, we need a, a motion to take and appoint the, the work group committee?
Yes, I think you would like to make the motion.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, it's a real motion to postpone, and then you can name the work group in the motion to postpone, so.
Okay, all right, I'd like to submit a motion to postpone the Andy Harlow rec. I'd like to submit a motion to postpone the Andy Harlow request. For, I'm going to call it the Kating Street duplex units. And, and table it for until our next planning commission meeting where we would, we would vote on at that point. I mean, we can't.
Right, yeah.
Ride in definitely.
But have like a set, a set of rules or whatever.
Yeah, it's what you're willing to, what conditions you're willing to, or stipulations you're willing to submit to the planning commission.
Right, whatever works for everybody.
Yeah.
I get you.
It's a condition for us to take and, we can't tell you what to do.
Right.
So, you know, we're looking for you, we'll work with you, but it has to be, you know, what you're willing to stipulate.
Gotcha.
So, so anyway, yeah, the motion to table until the, the February planning commission meeting. And at that time, a vote will be.
Not February, not February.
As I say, February, I meant April, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be shaking.
Yes. I'm seeing this. Okay, thank you for the correction. Until the April planning commission meeting where definitively a vote will be made at that point in time. And as part of this, Jared Vincent, Randy Cant and I will be part of a work group meeting. Jared will do the scheduling of it. We'll meet at the township hall to work with Andy to try and hammer out the details on this.
Motion by Rick, I won't try and repeat it. I gather you can pick it up from the video, okay. Motion by Rick Hegelstein, you're the second?
Second.
Seconded by Connie Chapman. Can you call her over please?
Yes, sir. Cupids?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Hegelstein?
Yes.
Cant?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Motion carries. I assume you have the gentleman's contact information for Jared?
Yes, yes.
I'll retake it.
All right, appreciate you guys, thank you so much for your time.
Certainly, thank you, Andy.
Okay, next item on the list is 10B, solar discussion update. Joe, I think you will do the original initial intro and then we'll open it up for a public hearing.
So, we don't have a public hearing on the solar stuff tonight, it's just a discussion item.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, we did talk about this last time. And I made some amendments to it, or revisions, I should say, based on the discussion we had. And I tracked my changes when I did it, and then when I opened the document, I couldn't get my tracked changes to show up. So nothing's underlined or struck out like it's supposed to be. I apologize for that, I'm not really sure what happened there. But at any rate, I can point you to the things that changed. So, first of all, definitions for the terms large, medium and small solar energy system and onsite energy storage system have been added to the draft. So these are now defined terms, I mean, time to refer to, I have to meet that meeting. One thing that I did when I was just fiddling with this as I was preparing for this meeting today is, I actually, that 1,200 square foot number in the medium and small definitions, I reduced it to 800. Because I think that was a little more in line with the discussion we had last time. So that also affects the table later in the document. I had gone to 1,200 based on, on one thing in my notes and I was just doing some math and I just, 800 seemed like a more, seemed like it was more in line with our discussion last time. So did want to note that. In addition to those definitions, the very end of the document is new. That deals with onsite energy storage and the transformer equipment that might be part of one of these installations. And basically what it's saying is that if you've got onsite energy storage systems, they can be put in an existing building. If they are not putting in, put in an existing building, they have to meet a couple of standards. One is that energy storage equipment or the new building enclosing the equipment should be all setbacks to the district. And also has to meet the height limits of our accessory building section. And then the energy storage facility would be part of an approved site plan. And any, any expansion on the exterior of that facility would require an amended site plan, just like any other non-residential expansion that we would look at. We added to the performance guarantee paragraph that the performance guarantee would be reviewed and updated every five years with increases in the health amount, to be reflective of the rate of inflation. And going back to my notes here, just to make sure that we've got, catching everything that changed. The height limit changed from 20 to 8, 12 and 12 feet for small, medium and large systems respectively. That was one of the other things that we talked about last time. Small and medium solar energy systems have to be accessory to a principal use on site. Oh, we clarified that the performance guarantee needs to be provided upfront. And then that was, that was the bulk of the, the changes. There were a couple wordings that I tweaked as well, but that's really what changed in there. Again, I wish it had the underlines and strikeouts, but Microsoft did me dirty on this one and I just couldn't get it back, so, sorry for that. Are there any questions or comments?
Just a question for you to start it. When you approached this, I know in a lot of the other things that we have, you go to other nearby location communities. Is that part of this as well? Is there's anyone that has a, I'll call it the model or the recognized best solar? And have you gone to them?
Yeah, I don't know if it's fair to say that there's a recognized best in the area, but there are state, communities with standards. And I would, I would call this an upgrade over some of the existing standards that were adopted a few years ago. This is a rapidly changing technological environment. So, you know, even if, even if an ordinance was, was, you know, amended, you know, four years ago, to deal with, with large solar installations, a lot's changed since then. There was literally no onsite storage four years ago. That just wasn't a thing that existed. Now many more of these projects have onsite storage of some sort. You know, oftentimes they're basically a 10-foot tall metal box, basically, where the, the stuff is stored inside. But nevertheless, it's a site feature that just wasn't a thing before. So all their ordinances don't tend to really address it, but we're trying to include it now because it's rapidly becoming more and more of a thing. And even the number, the number of technologies that are available to do onsite storage is rapidly changing. For smaller sites, lithium ion is probably the market leader still, the big batteries, basically. But there are also vanadium batteries that have advantages for stationary storage that are becoming a bigger part of the market. And then for really huge installations, you have these molten salt towers that are kind of crazy. You know, they store this energy in these molten salt towers. It's, it's, it's an interesting technology. I don't think we would get anything big enough to accommodate a molten salt tower here. But nevertheless, it's all stuff that we are keeping in mind.
What's in those towers again, Joe?
Molten salt.
Molten salt.
That's the medium in which the energy is stored here.
Thank you.
When I look at page four, pull it F, number three. Minimum of one evergreen tree should be planted at every 20-foot interval. Is this all the way along a solar panel or?
It'd be around the perimeter of the solar installation.
That's a lot.
Wherever they're, the appropriate zoning or uses is adjacent. So now if you had a subdivision next door or something, you would have to put it down the whole line of the, property line with the subdivision.
Okay.
Okay, so this is an update, you're not ready to finalize anything to?
That's really up to you. If you have any other comments or questions or anything else you'd like to look, to look at, I can certainly do that. If you do not, then you can consider sending a hearing on it. It's, it's really, it's really at your pressure.
Did we lower the height?
It was 20 before and now it's 8, 12 and 12.
Okay.
Yep.
So this has been significantly lowered.
Any communities you're aware of in, say, the state of Michigan, it's gone the route of establishing a site and then taking it apart, get rid of it?
Uh, I don't think there are any large projects that have been decommissioned at this point. All of them are fairly new, mostly within the last 10, 12 years, I would say is when most of the utility scale installations have gone in in the state. And most of them are significantly newer than that. So even the oldest ones are probably about 30 years out from decommissioning if they complete their full life cycle.
Do you have access to any lawsuits that might be active?
There has been a little bit of case law forming on this. I am trying to remember which township that was. Up in LePur County.
Goodland?
Yeah, Good, Good something, yeah.
Oh, Downly City.
Yeah.
That's where I gave you guys the, the spreadsheet, how many thousands of acres they wanted to put in.
They, they wanted to, that, that installation was going to, it was going to basically be several, the equivalent of several sections of the township. Uh, well, not even several sections of the township, like a third of the township, yeah.
I think I gave this to you guys last time.
Yep.
1,600 acres.
Yeah, they did, that was denied, I don't know that that's gone to litigation, but there has been a small amount of litigation on it.
So since this is in the form of an update and Mike, who is not here, probably has a vested interest as a board member before moves forward, I think I would take this as a discussion update and leave it on our agenda for the next meeting if there's any additional, and give Mike the opportunity to raise questions on behalf of himself and the board.
Sure.
That's okay.
That's fine.
Okay, 5G, this is part of our ongoing discussion as well?
Yes, there's no update this time.
Okay. And with that, we'll move on to the new business, which is really some old business at the same time. Everyone has received a copy of the planning commission goals. And it says covered from April 1st of 2022 through the end of this month. So we're open to some discussions, suggestions for change, questions for those who were not part of this a year ago. Here's the first few, first three. I had to comment, I was going to make on that. Oh, the, the, a lot of it pertains to the master plan. Indicating agreement with using the current master plan as a guide as part of working on our things that we do and keeping in mind what goals are and the language is there. I don't have any suggested changes personally, but we'll open it up for questions and see if anyone has any comments that anyone passed back to Joe. Again, this is just a review, this is what we had for a year. Here's another case where I'd like to have Mike, a member of the board, before we finalize this as the next year's goals, because he is privy to some conversations that we might not be. Anybody have questions for Joe on these?
Well, I have a question on 3B, discouragement of future, I'm sorry, further residential development? Are there any changes that may apply township interests in supporting residential development? So what's the? Let's, just don't understand what that means. Trying to recall that one. Yeah, 3B.
I think what they're saying is discourage for the residential development in the industrial district. Not everywhere in the township, yeah, because that would be bad. I think they just mean.
Oh, yeah, right.
No residential development in the industrial district.
Okay.
Yeah, because I had to read it twice.
That makes sense, okay, thank you.
Number six, recommend the township support and fund a joint global setting workshop. Should that say annual? Do we want an annual, annual workshop with all the boards?
I think, I think that was the intent, that that was the intention.
Do we need the word annual put in there?
I would suggest that.
Is number five still applicable or is that behind us? Ordinances for medical and recreational marijuana?
Uh, yeah, we've done it. We've, we've got something in place. So unless something changes in terms of the law, then I would say that that has been accomplished, yeah.
I haven't received one call and I can't remember when.
That's because the industry tanked last year, yeah, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, the, all of a sudden, critical mass was reached and then exceeded. And a bunch of places that had hit the ground running, closed down and the industry consolidated and there have not been a lot of new places open, except in, in areas that the industry has, has identified as underserved. And there's a facility in Romeo, at least one, and that, that's enough to make this area not underserved at this point.
Right.
The.
I think pretty much the day they opened wasn't the last day that anybody in the city probably heard.
Yeah.
Was it, were you getting a lot of calls before that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man.
Constant.
Yeah, everybody was getting constant calls. There were referenda in every community under the sun that hadn't already permitted it. And it was just like, one week, it stopped. And, and it was just a realization that the industry had, had exploded and it was just, just, that's kind of like a, like a star shedding its outer layers or something. It flew, it flew out and then it was like, oh, there's a little more gravity than we thought there was and collapsed. It really, it really just stopped cold. It really, it really just stopped cold. Um so it's probably gonna take a few years for it to go cranking again.
So I would recommend we remove that.
I think I think that could be safely removed, yeah.
I guess is there, the question, is there anything new that warrants calling out as a goal for the next year?
Where was it?
Uh in the first page, number five.
So your question is, is there a set number of goals that we should have? And I don't think there is.
No.
Um it's really if if there's someone in the group after giving this an additional thought. Uh want to bring it to the next meeting or the meeting after, we can always consider adding to it, right, Joe? It's not cast in stone.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Oh, this is a, as it says, ongoing, or I'm sorry, discussion.
I have a question, I don't know if you can answer this. Number three, but it goes to the next page. A list of things to work on, road commission, other roads to improve, some ideas for roads could be brush removal, obstructive visibility, ditches, general hazards, signage, illegal dumping, water problems, consideration for limestone. The township uh right now is trying to fix up the Armada groups, whatever it's called, cemetery. And they're gonna put a road in the back. Would that limestone be available to put in there or does it have to be on a county road?
That I don't know. I have to look.
Yeah, that might be a question.
That's my question, 'cause they're searching for money in dollars and all the improvements they need to make. So I didn't know if this, they're afforded so much limestone and stuff every year. So I didn't know if this would work. Maybe they'll say, no, it's gotta be on a public road.
Mike Philbrook could know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um maybe a question for that. Dana, would you be able to pass that on to Mike?
Sure, 'cause it's got nothing to do with our goals, but just that limestone made you think.
It's discussions.
I think one thing I would say is if there, if you don't have any other thoughts tonight on this, whether you're looking at it again next month. So, you know, you can feel free to cogitate on it over the next month. Do you have any thoughts next time?
I guess number five, I just have a comment. We've said recommend state of Michigan Road Commission, other relevant government body review, monitor safety conditions of thirty-three mile road exit, exit ramp. It's an ongoing problem, but are we, we put it in here, but are we really doing anything about it? You know, contacting the road commission or whatever. 'Cause I know you contacted Don Brown with Fisher Road.
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
But I mean, this ramp has been a problem since the day it was put in.
Oh, the thirty-three mile road?
It's MDA jurisdiction, so that's your agency.
I mean, we put it in there as a goal of something that's a problem, but are we really doing anything about it?
I thought there was a a meeting last year where we spent a lot of time talking about that. I don't remember what the action item was going to be though. There was a development there. Oh, I know what it was. There was a development being considered and it got denied, or a use, it got denied. I walked around.
Oh, yeah, the rezoning, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um I don't know that anybody took responsibility to go the next step on that.
Well, as far as being the industrial district and you have companies there that their trucks are not allowed to use the ramp. Ridiculous, like I said, it's been bad since day one.
Yeah, yeah, it stinks. There's really no one.
It's just kind of businesses that are already there, but.
Okay. This is what I'm gonna propose once again. Mike would know what the board may or may not be doing. I don't have any information about it, so I'll, I'm sure Mike will probably watch the uh, not the zoom, but the uh video for this. And uh I'll make a point to point it off to him. And that would be as a goal possibility.
That's a problem.
Okay, any other thoughts? Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to eleven B, uh which is the ZBA training. And along the way, uh we, I had talked with Mike Philbrook and Mike Tremblay about wanting to get everyone together to understand the planning commission and the ZBA and the board and their, I'll call it the framework for action. And uh we had Joe during the summer do a presentation on the planning commission. And so they got the benefit of what we do, uh learning about it, having questions. And yet I wanted to expand that a bit more in a way of education, understanding. And so Joe has a presentation he's gonna go through this evening specifically on the ZBA. Do we have like a projector or anything? And so one of the comments I made to him, there were some of these slides that are very, very similar to what the planning commission does. And so there is overlaps and similarity, but in other cases, um differences, so. Joe's gonna try to go through it and we targeted it for one hour to make that happen.
Rick, I know you're a resident, you know, I think it's a thing now.
Uh I'm sorry, was it?
The the projector?
Sub projector, of course. Um, you know, I've never used it.
We've got a trainee on this stuff.
I don't know everything.
Well, we all have a copy of it. We have a copy and you should have a copy.
You can just go through it.
I mean, I can, I can go slide by slide, I guess, and just sort of let you know.
There's slide numbers on it, so maybe just reference that as we got here at the bottom.
Sure. All right, so yeah, um you know, I won't dwell on anything here because we're not, this is only Board of Appeals. But um I think this is basically an educational uh item to to just inform all of you about what their roles and responsibilities are and um and just how that board functions and and what it really does, 'cause um they play a complimentary role to the planning commission. So when we look about, look at how they're established, um it's the same way that the planning commission is established. The zoning enabling act requires that a community that adopts a zoning ordinance has a zoning board of appeals. The number of members is established by ordinance. Um you have to have a minimum of uh three members, uh if your population's over five thousand, it needs to be five members. Uh I tend to think that a larger ZBA uh is is better, but um you know, some communities just don't have the the critical mass of people to get to the, to a larger number. Um members are appointed by the legislative body, a majority vote, just like planning commissioners.
Joe, if I can interrupt you for a second, do you know the number of CBA members that we have currently?
Yes, we have seven.
Seven, and Mike represents the planning commission.
Well, five, five are 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 board, we have two alternates.
Yes, so we have five and two alternates, so. Seven total, but it's a five uh three-person quorum.
Okay, thank you.
Um so in counties and townships, one member must be from the zoning commission, which is usually the planning commission. Very few communities in Michigan have a separate zoning commission and planning commission. One member may be from the legislative body, but that's not uh not required. Remaining members are selected from the electors of the jurisdiction. So they have, they should be, just like a planning commission, should be representative of the local population and interests. County ZBA members can't reside in a city or village, they've gotta be out in the townships. And then up to two alternates may be appointed, and we'll touch on why alternates are important later. So just like planning commissioners, it's a three-year term of appointment. They're staggered, so they don't expire simultaneously. If there's a vacancy, it's filled for the remainder of the term. And vacancies are required in the statute to be filled uh within a month of the resignation or expiration of a zoning board of appeals members term. However, in practice, that is recognized to be an impractical requirement. You have to have someone who is applying to be on the ZBA to fill the seat. So um generally speaking, it's acknowledged that if you're trying to find somebody, you're fulfilling that requirement. Uh ZBA members can be paid a per diem uh if if the community chooses to do so, can be reimbursed for expenses as well. And as with the planning commission, ZBA members can be removed for malfeasance, misfeasance, or non-feasance after a public hearing. Misfeasance is not one that people hear very often, so as a reminder, that's when you do something that would typically be legal in an improper context. So it's a kind of a strange thing to identify. Uh it's it's not often cited as a reason for removal, but nevertheless, it's it's something that you can be removed for. Uh non-feasance is just not showing up, basically. The slide seven you can skip because in a township, if the legislative body may not service the ZBA, that really applies to cities and villages. So the roles and responsibilities, it's a quasi judicial body. That's um an important part of due process for applicants in municipalities. Every action a ZBA takes, other than appointing its own officers, requires a public hearing. So anything that they make a decision on has to be a public hearing. A zoning board of appeals really has the ability to make or break communities' planning and zoning efforts. If uh we establish an ordinance and it's, we're constantly giving variances from that ordinance, the ordinance becomes less effective overall, generally speaking. If you're constantly giving the same variance, it may be time to amend your ordinance. Uh ZBA decisions can affect really the entire character of of a of a community. And just like any other board, ongoing training and assistance is essential to helping them do their job. Generally speaking, a ZBA should grant few variances. A variance really shouldn't be a means of just discourting the zoning ordinance. That doesn't mean that a zoning board of appeals has to reject ninety percent of all requests that come to it. But it should be granting few variances, which means if you have three variances that come to you every year, it might actually be reasonable to grant all three of them if the requests are 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 actually demonstrating a real practical difficulty. But if we're having an avalanche of variances that are being granted, if there's two or three every month, that's a problem. It indicates a problem either with the board or with our ordinance or both. All the responsibilities, so everything they do is application driven. Uh they can interpret a zoning ordinance, uh provision or or the map. Appeals of an order or decision of an administrative official or body, in this case, the planning commission, would be an administrative body of the township. The board, a building official, zoning administrator, um any of those people, if they make a decision and the applicant feels aggrieved by that decision, they can appeal to the zoning board of appeals. Uh special land uses uh and PUD decisions, uh of course, we don't have a PUD ordinance, are are permitted to be appealed to the ZBA only when the ordinance specifically says they can be.
If I understand you correctly, Joe, that the board here, you're talking about the Mike Philbrook and that group, that the ZBA can overrule what the board has decided?
Only insofar as the uh the township board is making a decision that pertains to the zoning ordinance or another ordinance that empowers the ZBA to make an appeal. So if it's like, you know, a police powers ordinance, like the house party ordinance, for instance, which is one of my favorites. The uh the ZBA would not be able to hear an appeal on that, uh because it's not empowered to hear appeals on it. But the subdivision ordinance, the ZBA could hear an appeal from that because they're specifically named to that ordinance. Variances from the standards of the ordinance, I think, is what most people are familiar with a zoning board of appeals doing. And then in in the case of our ordinance, approval of certain temporary uses, um a lot of zoning ordinances authorize that for a zoning board of appeals. So they make official interpretations of zoning ordinance text and the map. Once they make an interpretation, that becomes the official standard. So if we have ambiguous language in our ordinance and they make an interpretation, they hear what was intended by that that provision. Their interpretation becomes the standard, which means the very next thing that should happen is the planning commission modifies that provision of the ordinance, either to match what the zoning board of appeals thought, or if the zoning board of appeals interpreted in a way that the planning commission doesn't consider to be consistent with the intent, in a different way to make the intent more clear.
How does that feedback loop?
Well, the ZBA decisions are all recorded in in minutes. And if there is an interpretation case, it should be reported to the planning commission under its communications. And the planning commission can then take from that communication from the ZBA that, okay, we need to look at this provision.
Also have our leads on Mike Tremblay.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Have there been any ZBA meetings so far this year?
Um we're having one uh coming up at the end of the month.
Yeah, it'll be the first of the year.
We haven't had any questions about interpretation in the entire time I've been here, though it's all been variances. Um interpretation questions are generally more rare. Uh we do have some guidelines for interpretation, so avoiding broad interpretations, really just answering the question that's being asked. Consider past administrative decisions. If if there's ambiguous language in the zoning ordinance that's been interpreted exactly the same way for the last twenty-five years, they shouldn't be making a decision that contradicts the way it's been interpreted for the last twenty-five years. They might still make a recommendation that the language be changed to clarify it, but they should be consistent with past decisions. If there's been inconsistency, then they're kind of left going, well, okay, we can see both sides of this and we're gonna go with this interpretation. They can consider the history and the intent, so they could go back to the minutes from nineteen eighty-nine when the zoning ordinance language was originally adopted and say, well, here's what the conversation looked like back then. Uh so they can, they can consider that when they're making their interpretation. They can, of course, seek advice from me and legal counsel as they need to. They can also direct the applicant to apply for a zoning ordinance amendment. So most people who apply for an amendment to our zoning ordinance apply for a rezoning. But you can actually use the same form to apply to ask us to change the zoning ordinance. Because those interpretations are the official standard, it is very important to keep good records and have all the minutes readily accessible.
Now, what's, to what level of detail do they go? 'Cause we used to be very, very detailed and we've lifted that up to comply with what others do.
Right, well, so that's a matter of policy for the for the township. Um if you're really focused on the substance of the the motions, that's what you're going to have to refer to. So the motion should be very thorough. Um if you are taking more detailed minutes that uh actually record the discussion that occurs, then you'll have that available to you as well. So appeals to decisions regarding zoning ordinance issues are also the responsibility of the ZBA. So if, say, the building official denies someone and they feel they should not have been denied, that the decision was improper, then they would appeal to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals is not going. The zoning board of appeals is not going to go back to the beginning on this. They're going to base their decision on the record. What were the reasons that the building official gave for denying that request? And were those reasons properly considered? Was the decision properly undertaken? Is really the questions they're trying to answer. They're not relitigating the whole thing. So, they would base their decisions on the record. They wouldn't be substituting the ZBA's judgment for the judgment of the entity being appealed. They would limit their ruling on appeal to whether the original decision constituted a breach of duty or discretionary power. They're only addressing the appeal that's requested. And of course, they can seek planning and people advice. So, again, narrow decisions is what the ZBA is really tasked with. So, you know, they'd be asking themselves, you know, was the decision made properly? Were they looking at the zoning ordinance? Were they interpreting the zoning ordinance in a reasonable manner? If so, that decision should be upheld if they were looking at... If they were not looking at the zoning ordinance and they were just making a decision off the cuff and it didn't really have anything to do with our ordinances, well, then that's something that could probably be overturned. If the ZBA determines that a decision was made improperly, it can then review the case, you know, based on the standards of review in the zoning ordinance and actually make a decision. And they might come to the same conclusion as the original decision, that they've just determined was made improperly. But nevertheless, that's when they can go back to the beginning, once they've actually made a determination that the decision was made improperly. For interpretations, path weight should be given to past interpretations. And they should be practical to enforce. So, making an outlandish interpretation that just doesn't have any relation to the township's actual powers of enforcement is not something that a zoning board of appeals can really do. The ZBA can't move zoning district boundaries. So, if it's asked to make an interpretation on where the boundary is, they really have to look at the map and consider what the intent was and make their decision based on that. They can't say, well, it's clear, we think that this parcel should be in this district, so we're going to move the boundary over here. What they're really looking at is, okay, does this district actually end at the property line? Or is it in the middle of the street? Or is it at the front property line, that kind of thing? This map interpretations are not common anymore because this is all done with computers and it's, all the parcels are selected for the district that they represent. Back when this was all done on Mylar and, you know, Sharpies and things, it was much more common for it to be very difficult to tell, particularly with small parcels, what the zoning of a parcel was. So, these questions don't come to ZBA's very much anymore. Special land use. I'll skip PUD because we don't have it. Special land use. So, a zoning ordinance has to explicitly say, you can approve a special land use decision to a zoning board of appeals. Otherwise, it is not appealable. Ours does not permit that appeal. We would have to actually amend our ordinance to say, if you don't like the special land use decision, you can appeal it to the zoning board of appeals. When we look at non-use variances, so dimensional variance is how we usually describe it. The applicant has to provide proof of a practical difficulty. And there's a set of standards that the zoning board of appeals is going to look at. Is the problem self-created? Is this something that, you know, is this a situation they got themselves into by doing something else on the property? Are there unique circumstances on the property that, you know, suggest that there's a more practical difficulty because there's a weird end to the property line? Or there's a river running through the middle of the property or something like that? Would strict compliance with the ordinance prevent the owner from using his or her property for permitted use? Will a lesser variance than requested give substantial relief to the owner? So, if they're asking for a 15-foot setback variance, would they be able to actually do what they want to do if they only got a five-foot setback variance? Will the spirit of the zoning ordinance be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done?
So, that would be a case where maybe it came to the planning commission and we said, no, you don't. You have to stick to the standard. You can't go behind your 5B example. They could then go there and get that waiver.
Yes, they could. Yep, exactly. In that case, it'd be appealing your administrative decision. A lot of times what we do is we'll conditionally approve something and say, if you get this variance, then we're good with it. So, other considerations. Is the request consistent with the character of the area? That can be considered. Would the variance confer a special privilege on someone? Is this person going to be the only person in the township who gets to have a garage in this location? Is the variance request the minimum necessary? And are there alternatives that could minimize or eliminate the need for variance? So, you want to put it on the left side of your house? Well, if you put it on the right side, you wouldn't need a variance. What's the reason you're not doing it over there? And if they have genuine reasons for not doing that, well, then you can then respect those reasons and grant them a variance. But if they're just doing it for their own convenience or, you know, ZBA can't consider financial hardship. So, that might be a reason that's stated by the applicant, but the ZBA has to look at it from a pure land use standpoint and say, well, I know it's going to cost a lot more to put it over on the right side. However, that's the most reasonable course of action from an ordinance standpoint. You know, the zoning ordinance has criteria for granting the variance. And the ZBA's analysis really has to be framed based on those criteria. So, they should each be addressed in the motion to approve or deny, whether, you know, whether or not each of those standards is met. I'm going to skip over a couple because it's kind of redundant things. So, an example. We've got an RA 1A zoning district. I think this might be from Farmington Hills. And it's got its standards here. So, we've got minimum lot size, we've got minimum lot width, we've got setbacks, we've got lot coverage, building height, all these things that are, you know, numerical standards. Pretty straightforward. So, we've got a square lot. And it's 150 feet wide, there's a 15-foot setback or side setback required. And the person's proposing to put this brand-new house that's only 10 feet from the side lot line. And we can't, there's no natural features to avoid. We can't see any reason why they have to put this thing 10 feet from the lot line. This is a pretty textbook example of a variance that you would probably deny. Now, if we look at example two. That lot's 80 feet wide. So, it's well below the 150-foot minimum width. There aren't any natural features to avoid in this case. They're still going into that setback line. They might have a little bit more reason for that, given that they don't have the width that would be required in the district. However, they're still not really dealing with any features. So, there might, again, here, not really be a reason to grant this variance. But when we go to example three, now we've got a 150-foot wide lot, but it's got this kind of weird wedge shape. There's a wetland on the west side. The house, a little bit of it encroaches into that 15-foot side setback. Maybe there's a setback from that wetland on the other side, too. You've got to be 25 feet away from that. This is an example where the lot, the circumstances are starting to get unique enough that there might really be a practical difficulty that they did not preget themselves. Now, it's possible that they could reorient the house and avoid the variance. Without more detail, we don't know that. But nevertheless, this is getting closer to the kind of unique circumstance where you might find a genuine practical difficulty.
And so, do residents around requested variance have an opportunity to speak?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's a...
Or against?
Exactly. It's always a public hearing.
Okay.
Just would it come to the planning commission first?
Probably not for a house.
Okay.
Yeah.
But for like a business, it would have, yeah.
Okay. The next item is use variances. Now, I won't spend much time on this because the township cannot grant use variances. But basically, what this would do is allow a use not otherwise permitted in a district. They're pretty rare and they do require a two-thirds majority of the ZBA to approve them. The best example of this that I can think of is in one of the communities I work for, there was a historic house. And it was in a multifamily district, right on a corner between a side street and a main thoroughfare. And this historic house was not used as a house anymore. And a guy came in, it was across the street from an office district. And a guy came in and said, you know, I'd like to preserve this house, but I can't make it into a multifamily development. I would like to make it into a small office. Would you grant me a use variance to do that? Ultimately, with a lot of conditions, they did grant him a use variance to preserve that house and make it into a small office. And I think if it hadn't been on the edge of the multifamily district, they would not have permitted it. But because of its location and other circumstances, they wanted to see this historic house preserved. It made sense for them to grant this use variance. And they didn't want to rezone it for a number of reasons that had to do with their master plan. But we can't grant use variances in a township. So, we'll skip to temporary uses on slide 27. Many, though not all, zoning ordinances grant the ZBA authority to permit certain temporary uses. Those should only be approved when they meet the standards established in the ordinance. And when a temporary use is applied for, it should only go to the ZBA if the ZBA has that specific use assigned to it. If it's something that's outside of what's assigned to the ZBA, then you'd probably have to deal with that through the planning commission and maybe ultimately the board. So, when we look at how a ZBA votes, a concurring vote of the majority of ZBA members is required to pass a motion. So, if you have five members of ZBA and three members are there, all three of them have to vote yes in order for something to pass. Because you need a majority of the membership, not a majority of a quorum. Appeals to a decision of the ZBA go to the circuit court. And rehearing of the same case by the ZBA after denial can't occur unless there's substantive change in the requested variance or appeal. So, you requested a five-foot setback variance and you didn't get it, you don't come back for another five-foot setback variance. You might come back for a three-foot setback variance if you've adjusted something, but you can't come back for the same request. Like any other body, they have to maintain their minutes. Variances do run with the land, so it's important to keep good records of what properties have variances granted on them so that we know what's given a variance and what is legally non-conforming. There's always a difference. And then, generally speaking, you should check for existing variances on a property when a new development application is submitted. Now, if it's a property that's never been developed before, obviously, there's probably not a variance on it. But if it's a redevelopment, that's when you're going to pay attention to that. Once the ZBA makes a decision?
Let's back up just for a bit. So, if I am a home buyer and buying your home and you tell me that there is a variance, and I don't go back and check with the township, that's all on me, the new home buyer?
Yeah. Yeah. You should check, if you've been told that there's a variance on the property, you should check with the township, yeah.
And is there a public record other than going to the township or is there some...
There might, there might be certain local governments that make you feel out of wher request and things, but a lot of local governments will just help you out on something like that. It's part of the public record, you know, so.
And this is going to be a little bit off the wall, but if you are the seller of the home and you tell me that you got the variance and I don't check, is there any case law that says who carries the burden? Is it the seller of the home who claimed it? Or the buyer who accepted that?
I don't know of any case law. It would be a civil matter between the two parties, so it wouldn't implicate the municipality. But I, my inclination is to think that the burden would be on the buyer to do their due diligence. That's my, you know, unless there was just a gross misrepresentation, you know, where somebody produced fraudulent documents and handed them to the buyer and said, here's all the evidence, you have a variance and...
Would something like that come out with title insurance and all of the things you have to do when you buy property?
It may, yeah.
Should it be listed somewhere?
Depending on what the variance is, it could affect, you know, insurance or it might be listed in some other documentation like that.
There's not a requirement to record them with a deed?
No, not typically, no.
Okay.
So, once the ZBA makes a decision, then that goes to the administration and the administration has to make, has to do the follow-up and make sure that the applicant is complying with that decision through their inspection process, or their enforcement process if necessary. A lot of this meeting stuff is going to be very familiar because they have a lot of the same rules that apply to them. So, meetings of the ZBA are held at the call of the chairperson. Generally, what you do is you establish a typical meeting day, just like a planning commission does. And the ZBA will meet when it has business to conduct. They don't tend to have meetings like a planning commission might have where all we're doing is discussing ordinances or something like that. They have to have a case, generally speaking. If you go a year without a case, you should probably have an administrative meeting just to elect your officers and, you know, make sure that you're in working order. And you can just go another year without having a meeting. Whereas a planning commission is required to meet four times a year, has to meet quarterly regardless of whether it has business to conduct. You do have to have a quorum for the meeting to occur, of course, just a majority of the members. And if a meeting is canceled, you post at the location of the meeting, 18 hours before the scheduled start of the meeting, just like you would with a planning commission. That's an Open Meetings Act requirement. So, you've got noticing requirements because every zoning board of appeals action is a public hearing. So, that has to be advertised in a general circulation newspaper 15 days before the date of the hearing. And then, everyone within 300 feet of the property also needs to get a direct notification by mail. The owners of the subject property have to be notified as well of the hearing. And then, if you've got like multi-unit structures, you can give one occupant each unit notice. If there's more than four units, then you can give it to the manager, owner, and you can post it at the primary entrance, like if you've got an apartment building or something.
And can the petitioner who is requesting the meeting be represented by legal counsel in their absence?
Yes, yes, they can. In their absence, or even if they're there, they can have their legal counsel.
And does the township have a person who is legal counsel?
The township does have a legal counsel. The law firm that serves as the township's legal counsel is Seabird and Blaski. And Bob Seabird and Christine Anderson are the two attorneys who work with the township there. So, generally, notice is considered to be given when it's personally delivered, deposited by the U.S. Postal Service. The law does not expect the township to take responsibility for whether or not people are... The, the law does not expect the township to take responsibility for whether or not people are digesting the notice. If they're opening it, if they're just chucking it in the trash with all their other mail, um, that is not the township's responsibility. It just has to be delivered from the township.
You read it all the time where they only have to notify people within three hundred feet. That seems kind of worthless, three hundred feet.
Depends on the context. If you've got a bunch of fifty-acre lots, then you might only be notifying like, you know, four other people. If it's.
Five hundred feet.
Neighborhood like mine, three hundred feet, that's a lot of houses. And most variances, quite frankly, are very small.
Three hundred feet doesn't notify a lot of houses.
Yeah, it, it, it is a small, a township can establish a larger number if it wants to. It has to understand that it's creating an additional administrative burden and, and amount of cost for itself. And most likely it has to increase its fees to, to compensate for that cost. Uh, but you could say five hundred feet if you, if you felt that as a matter of policy, that was more appropriate for the context of your community. But three hundred feet is what's required by statute.
Yeah, and there have been times when we expanded that, uh, while it's out in the country, you don't reach for the people within three hundred feet.
A notice has to describe the nature of the request, it has to indicate the property that's the subject of the request, include all addresses. If there's no address, it should give a general location and a parcel ID. It has to state where and when the request will be considered and then indicate when and where written comments can be received. Uh, the Open Meetings Act, of course, applies to zoning boards of appeal, just as does the township board and the planning commission. Um, that requires that a meeting of a public body has to be open to the public. Uh, there is no circumstance under which a zoning board of appeals would need a closed session. All the decisions have to be made in a meeting open to the public. They have to be accessible with reasonable accommodations, um, if ample notification is provided, provided. And, um, public comments have to be heard at some point in the meeting. So just like we have our segment where people can comment on items not on the agenda, a zoning board of appeals also has to do that. The public can record a meeting all at once, audio, video, they can make a painting of it if they felt like it. Whatever they want to do to record the meeting, they can do it. So the zoning board of appeals, just like a planning commission, should have some bylaws and it should conduct business according to those bylaws. Fall, you begin your meeting on time to the extent possible. Sometimes someone gets stuck in traffic and you gotta wait. It's understood. Uh, you follow your written agenda. Comments are directed through the chairperson, just like they are at the planning commission. Deliberation should be in the open, so, um, when discussion is occurring, there shouldn't be side conversations between two people on the board and while the rest of the board is discussing something else. And, you know, zoning board of appeals members, just like planning commissioners, should, uh, feel encouraged to express their opinions, uh, to ask questions. Uh, but in the case of a zoning board of appeals, you really do need to focus on the request, uh, at hand. The, uh, ZBA chairperson is very similar to the planning commission chairperson, maintains order for the meeting and enforces meeting procedures. You're the one taking the comments and, and maintaining courtesy throughout the meeting. And then, um, in the case of the zoning board of appeals, the chairperson actually is empowered to administer oaths and compel the attendance of witnesses. This doesn't happen very often, uh, but it is possible. The zoning board of appeals has, is a little unique in that respect. Public hearing guidelines, again, very closely mirror what we see for a planning commission. You describe your ground rules before you open the hearing. In, in our case, we do it at the beginning of the meeting, so everybody's aware. Generally, you have a time limit. If someone's getting out of line, they can be ejected from the meeting. And speakers address the, uh, ZBA one person at a time. And if you have a special request to speak a second time, you should go after everybody else that had a chance to give their first set of comments. When people are providing comments, you take their comments. And when the hearing is closed, that's when you address what, what's been said. There's not a back and forth with, uh, the, with the speakers. And the hearing is of course closed when everybody wants to speak. All comments should come from the ZBA once the hearing is closed, unless the chairperson grants permission to ask questions of the applicant, their representatives, or other parties of the clear interest. So if someone during the comment period out here said something interesting, the chair could at his or her discretion say, we'd like to ask for some clarification from that person. And you could at that point engage in discussion with them. When a motion's made and some of the comments from that point should refer to the motion at hand. Uh, when a discussion ends, you call for a vote. And then, once you voted, you move on. Uh, there's no more discussion of that by then. Just like with the planning commission, I mean, running an orderly meeting really has not, most of the same tough ones. You don't have to answer every question. If things are getting out of hand or overly emotional, you can take a recess and give everybody a chance to calm down. You don't have to feel compelled to make a decision the night of the hearing. Uh, postponement might lead to a more informed decision or cooler heads being in the room. The ZBA has to represent the interests of the entire community. You can't just be representing the interests of those at the hearing. That's, same goes for a planning commission. And then, once the hearing's closed, the public isn't involved in the discussion unless the chair specifically singles someone out to ask them a question. Motions are going to include in the minutes, who made the motion and who seconded it, a description of the request that, that's being, uh, acted upon, the action taken, so approval, denial, postponement, tabling, whatever we're doing. Conditions that might be attached to the approval, the reasons for the actions taken, so those should state the standards and what the ZBA's response to each of those standards was. They can refer to staff reports as appropriate. And then, of course, everyone should be clear on the motion before a vote, and then you only entertain one motion at a time. Conditions that are placed on a motion have to be reasonable. They have to be designed to protect resource, natural resources, the health, safety, and welfare, or social and economic well-being of users, residents, landowners in the community. They should be related to the valid exercise of police power. And they, uh, should be necessary to meet the intent and purpose of the ordinance, so they shouldn't be frivolous. And then the motion can also identify who's responsible to ensure that the conditions are implemented. Typically, that's going to be your administration. Uh, there's a sample motion in here that you can read at your leisure. On the next slide there, forty-six. The gen, the minutes agendas in adjournment can be approved by a majority of those present, so those don't need that majority of the membership. It can be, it can be a two-one vote to approve the minutes, for instance. So if there are seven members, they will have to vote for a motion to pass it. And if only four members are present, all four have to vote for it. And then, uh, there's a little list of reasons that you should not grant variance, you know, no one objected. Following the ordinance would be too expensive, they already built it, I don't like this standard. We trust that they'll do a good job. The applicant really needs to get started soon, uh, or the applicant didn't know about the standard. None of those are acceptable reasons to, uh, to grant a variance. And this last section really deals with, uh, guidance for ZBA members. And this really all applies to planning commission members as well. So a member of ZBA who's a member of the zoning commission or the planning commission can't participate in a public hearing on or vote on the same matter that the member voted on as a member of that other body. So let's say the planning commission denies a site plan. Mr. Tremblay is also on the zoning board of appeals. The planning commission's decision is appealed to the ZBA. Mr. Tremblay should be recusing himself from that case. And one of the alternates will step in and take his place on that particular case. And then, once that case is done, if there's another one on the agenda, the alternate steps aside and Mr. Tremblay retakes his seat.
What kind of cases would, would we necessitate or allow? Cause I thought all these were coming from the planning commission going to the ZBA. What other kind of circumstances would somebody bring to the ZBA that has not come through the planning commission?
Uh, I mean, there are just things that the planning commission doesn't make a decision on, like a fence, for instance, or, you know, most of like residential property. We just generally, unless it's a, uh, oversized accessory structure or something, we just don't get involved. Uh, here with, with approving houses or, you know, a residential fence or a swimming pool or something like that. So if they needed a dimensional variance to build something like that, they could go straight to the zoning board of appeals and never really deal with the planning commission.
Could they come to the planning commission first?
They wouldn't really have a reason to, I don't think, unless they were petitioning for you to change the ordinance. That's the one circumstance in which they would probably come to you first. So alternate members are used, one of regular members absent. So if you've got your seven member, your seven members and you get your five regular members and one of those regular members knows they can't be in a meeting, they should let the administration know. And the administration can then call on an alternate member to fill their seat at that meeting. Uh, if a regular member's recused due to a conflict of interest, your brother applied for variance, then an alternate can step in to, uh, take that case, uh, instead. Or if a regular member from another body is unable to vote, the example I just gave, um, then an alternate would step in. An alternate acts just like a regular member when they're voting. And if an alternate begins a case, that same alternate should see it through to the end. So if there are three meetings pertaining to the same case, because a decision wasn't made at the first two, that alternate's going to be on that case the entire time. Conflicts of interest, so uh, if there's a remote possibility that a decision will benefit a ZBA member personally, particularly financially, fellow members should be told about the conflict and that person should accuse themselves from the consideration of the issue. Uh, the same thing applies to a planning commission member. If there's some uncertainty about whether to, uh, recuse, the municipal attorney can be consulted. Here's the circumstances, should this person recuse? And the municipal attorney will tell you one way or another, yes or no. There's always a conflict of interest if a member will benefit financially from the outcome of a case. Whether that means denial or approval, doesn't matter. If there's a financial interest, then it's a conflict of interest. A recused member shouldn't participate in discussion of an issue. Generally, the, the best advice is for that person not even to be in the room. They have a conflict of interest, then go in the hall, and when the next item comes up on the agenda, they come back in. Central conflicts of interest, you are the applicant. I think that one's pretty obvious. Close relative, business associate, uh, personal friend. Personal friend isn't always a conflict of interest. You may have absolutely no stake in, in the variance that's being asked for. It's something that you should probably disclose, though. You know, let's say you're an attorney, you're serving on the zoning board of appeals now, and you represented someone twenty years ago when they come in for a variance. That is not a conflict of interest. You can disclose is that you once represented them, but as long as you're not representing them now, you don't have any financial stake in it. So, uh, you don't have a, a conflict of interest. Email communication, another one that really applies to all the boards in the township. Don't exchange emails deliberating on, on items in a quorum. If you've got items in a quorum, you're violating the Open Meetings Act if you're discussing that business outside of a quorum.
Considered to be a majority of the members, yeah.
So if you've got seven members, four members together is a quorum.
And then if the committee, the planning commission, you short one because of someone resigning and, and that number is not always four or three. So if you have six, now you got three and three?
It would still be four would be a quorum, yeah. Cause you couldn't hold the meeting if you didn't have four. You know, just generally speaking, the less you discuss matters before you, that you're being, going to be asked to decide on outside of the, uh, the meeting, the setting of a meeting, the better off you are. If two people are discussing it, it's not technically a violation of the OMA, but nevertheless, you want to do all that deliberation in public. Email account you use to receive communications could be subject to FOIA requests, so that's another thing to be careful of. I've actually FOIA'd once, uh, when I was on the Berkeley Planning Commission, and I actually had no communication that related to the item in question, but, um, I had to look through my email to make sure I didn't and, and show that I looked through it, so. Definitely something to keep in mind. Visiting a site, you know, you could hardly better understand a proposal. That's the same, same is true for a planning commissioner. Don't enter a site without written permission from the property owner. Generally speaking, um, you can modify your application forms to grant permission for members of the boards to visit the property. And if they're signing that application, then they've given you permission.
Pause for a minute. Does our application provide for that?
No, it doesn't. Something that we could do, though, if you wanted to.
That would have to be probably done by the board or can the planning commission control?
The board would ultimately have to authorize the modification of the forms, yeah.
So just for everyone's knowledge, I'll, I'll talk through my, your, your mention.
Yeah. Generally speaking, um, you know, let people know when you're going to be in the property, if you can. That you, you're, you've got the application, so you're going to have the contact info for the applicant. It's just best if they don't suddenly find you and they're back here.
Yeah, I did go to a home to visit and on the, a tree at the entrance to the driveway that says, "Don't come, don't come further," or something like that. I didn't, um, go further for obviously multiple reasons.
The picture of the gun in the big dock?
It was something like that.
If a quorum is going to visit a site at once, you actually have to provide a public notice of that because it's a meeting. But you get them, you get a quorum, yeah, that's a public meeting. Should avoid commenting on the case while on the site. You can talk to the person who owns the, the property, of course, but don't give any indication of which way you're thinking of voting or what your opinion of the case is. If you are interviewed, say by a little paper, um, ask yourself, am I able to respond to this in an informed way? You might consider consulting the township administration before you think about responding. Responding ethical. If you have an open case, uh, it, don't, you could just feel free to say, no, I don't feel comfortable responding to that. And, um, you should definitely never indicate how you plan to vote or how you think other members might plan to vote. You know, generally speaking, if someone ambushes you for an interview, if you're not expecting it, you should defer and say, look, I, I can schedule an interview, but I'm, I'm not going to give you one right now. Uh, because, you know, you want to have your feet on the ground when you're answering questions. So you could potentially schedule an interview and then you can kind of do your research and run up to that interview, who is this person, what publication? Uh, do they have some agenda? Do they have a deadline? What's their story about? What do they already know? You can feel free to ask them as many questions as they're asking you. Well, to be spoken to, what's the story going to run? All things that you deserve to know as the interview agent. What if you actually do give an interview? You know, your talking points should really be centered on the facts of the issue. You know, your talking points should really be centered on the facts of the issue. Don't use jargon, don't feel the need to feel silence. If they ask you a yes or no question, say yes or no, and then stop talking, and let them ask a follow-up question. Stick to whatever your key message is, and don't be afraid to tell them that you can't comment on something or don't want to comment on it. You know, it doesn't matter how well the ZBA does its job, eventually something will wind up litigation, which just happens. So really, a lot of what these, what we've talked about tonight is about managing municipalities' exposure. So following your procedures, avoiding conflicts of interest, keeping good records, making strong motions that really respond to the standards of review and record your reasons and how you respond to each of those standards of review, and then treating applicants equally is very important, because that will all strengthen your case if you find yourself in a litigation situation. And that's it, that's the presentation.
We've given a joke.
I'm so sorry about the projector.
So we had the, you were the one who suggested this, so don't feel bad. We would each have coffee and...
Yeah, I'm glad that...
At work.
Yeah, that could have been, we could have a lot better. Thank you.
Okay. So now we're on to item 12, comments from committees and consultants. I don't think we have any committees going at the moment. The one that we're going to do with Jared leading, that will be a committee, correct?
Yeah.
Depending on how long it takes to get that resolved, you may have to give a report Any comments from the commissioners of general interest? Very none. I make the motion to adjourn. Seconded by?
I'll say it.
Connie? If anyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nailed? Motion passed.